Thank you very much and good evening, everyone. I'm Ryan Holt. And what motivates me to pursue a position on the school board? A number of things. One, I'm a proud graduate of Classical High School. And I want to see all of our schools do better. This is a critical time in the school system as we get to the point where, at some point, we are going to be transitioning from state control. So, a good school district is the difference between whether or not people live in this city or businesses move to this city. And my skills as an attorney, as well as a government employee, a mayor's chief of staff, will allow me to provide oversight, perspective, and basically, a good job for our students and teachers and parents.
We are recording this forum, which will give a chance for members of the school board nominating committee to review the forum. We also will be posting clips online. We're joined by a couple of members of the media who are here as well to share this with the broader community. And I want to thank you all for taking time out of your evening. We are going to be splitting tonight's forum into two pieces based upon geographic districts. Some of you may know, due to a charter change, we've changed the way we do school boards now. And so, we have a half-elected, half-appointed. But the appointed members are also appointed by region. So, in order to make this a little bit easier for the audience to follow and a chance for the participants to share their thoughts and be a little bit less brushed. If you were here a year ago, there was a ton of interest and honestly, there were too many people on stage and it was hard to follow. So, tonight, we're split into two pieces, starting with regions one and two, which is one, two, three, and then four, five, and fourteen. The way the appointments will work is... The way the appointments will work, similar to in the past, and this is established by city charter, there's a school board nominating committee. Two of the three members are here tonight. The third member will review the forum on tape. I want to thank Melvin Benitez and Tom Kirk Van Der Slice for their service. And then, they will make recommendations by region to me. And then, those appointments will have a chance to interview those folks. And then, I will then submit a recommended nominee to the city council. Providence City Council will entertain those nominations in January, and we hope to have that confirmed as soon as possible. They will join the five elected school board members, and then, those 10 members make up our new school board. This is an exciting time and a time of very serious work for our school board. And so, I want to thank each and every one of you for your offer to serve. We expect over the length of these new terms that the schools will transition back to Providence's local control. And so, you will be in the seat that matters when the school board takes the schools back. And so, we're taking this process very seriously because this is about to be a very serious time. I want to acknowledge in the room Cory Jones, who's one of our newly-elected school board members. Congratulations, Cory Jones. Thank you for taking the time to be here tonight. And we're going to hear from the city council here in just a minute. After that, I will turn it over to the League of Women Voters, who is going to do what they have done for a very long time, which is help inform and with fairness and sometimes strict timekeeping, keep us moving along. And so, having been onstage for forums moderated by the League of Women Voters in the past, I can tell you those paddles mean something, so please respect them. And we're really grateful. These are volunteers in our community that care about civic engagement and care about an informed electorate. And they're fulfilling their responsibilities as members of League of Women Voters to do that for us tonight. They have done this many times before. And so, for the numerous times that they've done this, thank you very much. If we'll give a round of applause to League of Women Voters. And now, I would like to introduce the president pro temp of the Providence City Council, Councilman Juan Charro. We'll say a few words on behalf of the council. And then, to the League of Women Voters, and then, we'll get started.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. And good evening, applicants and public servant to all of you. It is a good night for all of us because we continue to move forward in getting us organized and getting us to the new year, especially the community and all of you for coming out in full force as they're coming in tonight to hear from these potential appointees to the school board. I also want to thank the mayor. The mayor has been a steadfast mayor who's been having community dialogues in the community, in the city of Providence, and will continue to do so. And also, to the school board nominating commission of your public servants, volunteer, for reviewing the candidates and hosting this forum so we can all be as informed as possible. The Providence schools have made it clear, our business people, our parents, us as a city council, have made it clear that we need to continue to stand up and do the right thing and move our education forward. Over the past few months, my colleagues, President Miller and the city council, and I have been listening intently to schools, leaders, teachers, and families, business people, and most importantly, our students. Visited student groups and individuals. Just last week, city council has joined student activists in our Providence Schools' PVD to hear their priorities and their concerns. The message to us is urgent. It's urgent to the students, it's urgent for our communities, and they deserve accountability. Adequate resources and a true vote in shaping decisions that directly impact them. And I'm proud to chair the council's special committee on health, opportunity, prosperity, and education. And as we focus on education, we will continue to work with our mayor, with the Providence School, and our government leaders, and parents, and students, to hear their concerns and to chart a path forward. Our new hybrid board has a unique opportunity to help bring forth a transformative change that our students are calling for, our parents are calling for. I want to congratulate the five newly-elected members who just joined the Providence Public School Board. We are very grateful for your commitment in improving our outcomes, and we look forward to working with you. It is my hope that the appointed members can build the momentum as we work together to find solutions, bring vision and determination to guide the critical turnaround and ensure a successful and lasting return to local schools, local control. Tonight, the potential appointees will have an opportunity to show their intent, to address the challenges, to improve the lives of our students, and also, show us or tell us how they're also going to be working with us in the city government, mayor, city council, and those elected officials. With the goal of changing our system to ensure that our schools and our students are successful. The path ahead won't be easy, but with a school board packed with compassionate, committed leaders, the direction forward becomes a bit clearer. So, we owe it to our students, our parents, and to our city and its future to rise to this moment in the manner of brighter future for Providence Public Schools. We can make this happen. We can't settle anything, we can't settle for anything less. So, along with our mayor and the entire city council, we look forward to engaging you. And the next step, once the commission and the mayor makes their recommendation, they come before us, the final ones. And your voice is so important because even at that stage, we would like to hear you. And we invite you to our third floor in the city hall, the city county chamber. Thank you, and have a good night, and I will see you all. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Juan Charro. Just a couple more housekeeping items. As you can tell, there's some name cards of some folks who have applied who are not yet here. We will allow them to take the stage, but we will not go backwards in the questions if they arrive during the forum. Similarly, because I've broken this into two pieces, the timeline for tonight is 5:00 to 6:30 for group one, and 6:30 to 8:00 for group two. And if it wraps up a little faster, based upon the number of people participating, that's fine as well. But we've given folks a notice about a 6:30 start for the second group, and then, we'll conclude when that second group concludes and allow everyone to then move on with their night. And I know it's a busy time during the holidays. So, at this point, we'll get started. I'm going to introduce Joan Retsinas from the League of Women Voters to get us started and go through the format for the evening, and then, actually, start with questions. Joan?
Great, thank you. Thank you. The League of Women Voters is thrilled and honored to be part of this process for something like the 20th year. No surprise, the League is keen to have uneducated citizens supporting for a robust democracy. So, we are grateful to Mayor Smiley for reaching out to the public, who have such a stake in public education. A few details. Mark Affucci and Helen Walsh in the center have time cards. You will each have a minute for a question, which is pretty short, so I urge you not to waste it. We will end you at... So, please, show your time cards. 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and stop. Also, we have all your bios online, so you don't need to totally reintroduce yourselves or really waste your time saying how much you love children. So, please, let's start. Question number one. What motivates you to be on the board? What spills and/or experiences have prepared you to pursue this work or work to address these issues in this role? One minute, we'll start with Mr. Holt, and then, we will just keep going down. So, Mr. Holt?
Thank you very much, and good evening, everyone. I'm Ryan Holt. And what motivates me to pursue a position on the school board? A number of things. You know, one, I'm a proud graduate of Classical High School. And I want to see all of our schools do better. This is a critical time in the school system as we get to the point where, at some point, we are going to be transitioning from state control. So, a good school district is the difference between whether or not people live in this city or businesses move to this city. And my skills as an attorney, as well as a government employee, a mayor's chief of staff, will allow me to provide oversight, perspective, and basically, a good job for our students and teachers and parents.
Hi, my name is Laura Murdaugh. I'm motivated because my children really had a transformative experience going to the Providence Public Schools. And I was involved with the schools, starting in around 2004, where I worked at, I worked in the schools to be a senior in front of Anthony Green Middle School. I did that for about 10 years with Jacob Kenner. And then, I moved on to Nathan Bishop, and I worked with Glenn Zinowitz. So, I've been around a while, and so, I've met a lot of wonderful teachers, and I believe my skills as well. I just finished my Juris Doctor, Roger Williams, so I can... Oh, I'm up already, okay. Okay, okay, you know my glasses, need the glasses. Okay, so, I believe I can be useful in terms of legal interpretation and being able to read policy. I also have a degree in architecture from RISD, which I think will be useful for evaluating plans.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Melissa Hughes. I am a current member on the Providence School Board. My main motivation is that I'm the parent of two current students in Providence Schools, an 11th grader and a 9th grader. I believe that my experience in this one short year that I've served so far positions me well to help us through this next transition period. This year, I was elected by my fellow board members to serve as secretary of the board. I also was named policy committee chairperson. Recently, I also served as a designee on the school board, for the school board on the collaboration group, working towards transition back to local control. I think that the most important thing that we need as we move forward is a mix of fresh ideas and experience, and I believe that I can bring that experience here. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Angela Newman. And what motivates me to be on the Providence School Board is, one, I'm also on the school board already. So, getting a firsthand experience working with folks who believe in education and young people as much as I do was refreshing. And it's one thing to actually care, but it's another to roll these up and actually do it. I'm motivated because if people didn't invest in me as a young person, I grew up going to a local after-school program, an arts school program, AS220, and it was the adults who cared enough to roll their sleeves up, do the hard work, do the policy change, have a vision. That's why I am where I am now, as a co-executive director of that same organization. And as a mother of five, two of which are in Providence Public Schools right now, I not only want Providence Public Schools to be good for them, but I want them to be for all of the 500 young people that I serve at AS220 every day.
My name is Herman Brewster. I had a son who went to Classical and walked out after a few weeks, another son who managed to graduate from Classical. The son who walked out ended up at ALP, which turned out to be a wonderful, wonderful experience. I was a counselor at prison, and I reached the point where I needed to change, and I got a degree at Brown in teaching. And when I realized we had fallen behind from where we were when I was teaching in the 90s, I felt that I just had to participate in change and improvements and make this a place where everyone has an opportunity to excel.
Thank you. My name is Toni Yakin. What motivates me is my continued work in the education management field for the past 18 years. I've worked with students from all around the globe, and the most motivating factor is students here in Providence, Rhode Island. They very much are like myself in terms of their grit to continue with their education and with their passion to get the best education path that they can get in here in Providence. So, I think that's what's continuing to motivate me. So, I think additionally, I think that my continued work on the school board would be an asset as well. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Toby Donahue. What motivates me? To be honest, the funding fight that we just went through with the state is what brought me here. I've worked in public finance for the last nearly eight years. I worked for the House Finance Committee writing the final budget that comes along the state. I'm familiar with policy analysis, I'm familiar with writing the law that gets to what you wanted to get to. And I'm very familiar with, like, I believe in the idea that money is policy, right? The things that we fund are the things that we do is a mechanism for change. I bring a lot of skills in doing that work. Thank you very much. Also, I have a couple of kids who are in Providence Schools now, I have another graduated, and I myself dropped out of Providence Public Schools, which I think gives me a little bit different perspective than most people. In fact, from ALP, which is a fantastic school, and it wasn't their fault. I just, I really wanted to come back and try to give back to the city and the state. I'm here on purpose, and I wanted to do what I could help, especially the kids here. We have a lot of great youth organizations, they do a lot of great work, they need some support, and I know that adults are always making the best choices.
Good evening. My name is Jamil Clark. What motivates me to work for the school board is, as an alumnus of Fox Point Elementary School, the gifted program at Anthony Green Middle School, Classical High School, and even Northwestern University in Evansville, Illinois. I have come to appreciate, understand, and fully celebrate the importance of a quality education. I believe that in addition to our new schools and school programs like PCTA, a rise in standard for schools and education in the city is important and vital to the future of the city. In addition to our teacher pay and school student programs, I think that our local control for Providence Schools is vital for the city of Providence, with the caveat that state funding does provide additional funding, which the city alone might not be able to fully appreciate without the state contribution. I am humbled and excited by the prospect of working for the city in this capacity and with improvements, and Providence has once again already begun to make. I am energized by the prospect of a better Providence for our schools and for the city at large.
Question two. Question two, we'll start with Ms. Newman, so that there's some shaping up with people. How may the school board serve and be most impactful or helpful in this time before the district returns from state to municipal control?
Thank you for that question. I think school board members, and I definitely experienced this in the past year, we have this unique positionality on the school board to be in between worlds. So, right, we're not like in the city government necessarily, we're not in the district, we all come from different places, different organizations, and we're actually able, we have this magic power, which I think is to be able to like hear the needs of different stakeholders, students, families, city, RIDE, the state. And we're able to help translate, we're able to help bridge communication, build relationships, and be able to take feedback that comes from community and bring it to folks who may not have that same access or that same ear. And then, also, in the same way, take what we're hearing about policy, regulation, the future, the vision that maybe RIDE has and that the city and the district has that may not be translating, but is actually really powerful, and we can bring that back to community. So, I think right now, our mission and goal should be to build really good relationships that will continue this work moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. Brewster?
As a private citizen, I don't have access, let's say, to schools. As a school board member, I believe I can visit schools, I can meet students, I can talk to principals, and get a sense of what is actually taking place. Outside of that, as a, you know, in the situation I'm in now, it's very frustrating because I have no idea what is actually taking place in our schools. And I think that's important. It's important to hear from all the people who have a stake in our schools. And that includes principals, the janitors, the teachers. And so, that's why I have chose to do this.
We're continuing with Ms. Yakin.
Thank you. As an active member of various subcommittees, I have a very good finger on the pulse working with state organizations, RIDE, with the principals, with the students. And I feel that would bridge forward with the new hybrid school board model as well, particularly with being an active member on the Return to Local Control Commission and having a great understanding of the key metrics and how to actually put them into place and the blueprints are already developed and shepherding them into action. Thank you.
So, the board is essentially a select body. It's here to do oversight, it's here to hold the school administration accountable. One of the things we often see is that there's often a plan in place, but sometimes, people get out over their skis, they have a great idea, and they're not following through with the plan that we all agreed to. We should be here, listening to teachers, listening to students, listening to the administration, but holding them pretty accountable for what the plans are, sticking to the plan, and reappearing the impact between both, between the public and the government.
Good evening, this is Jamil Har Clark, once again. I think that the best way that the school board and the Providence Public School District at large can benefit from a continuation of state funding under Providence auspices, of course, for the school board and the Providence Public School District, is to continue our new building projects and renovations at the pre-existing big four Providence Public High Schools, by which I mean especially Classical High School, Mount Pleasant High School, Hope High School, which is a magnet school, which is a wonderful program for the city and for the school board and school district to support, and Hope Central High School as well. In addition to renovations and building expansion and maintenance, I believe that attention paid to the curriculum and an updating forward in light of the expanding consciousness that students have of the world around them and the needs of the 21st century society to continue educating their students, I think that's how the best begins. Thank you very much.
We've got to get the school district ready to walk through that door when that door opens, and hopefully, that door opens sooner rather than later. And to do that, we have to have, and interact, we need to be able to interact with RIDE, which I do from time to time in my current capacity as chief of staff for Mayor Patuckett. But we also have to work with the teachers, the parents, and the students to hear their voices, as we create those policies, procedures, to get the school district ready to go. The other thing that we have to do is be advocates for the good things that are happening in the schools right now. We need people who are out there, talking to the media, talking to the people, saying, promoting the good things about the district, because I know a lot of times, that's not done enough, and it needs to be done more. We need to have people be able to buy into what's going on in this district for all of us to come together as one city to improve the schools and create the best school district in the state and hopefully, at some point in the country. Thank you.
Ms. Murdaugh?
Okay, well, you know, this whole thing started when Johns Hopkins did this study, right, of the Providence Public Schools, and they said it was, you know, one of the worst performing schools. So, you know what, I'd like to take a deep dive into that study, and I'd like to, and then, I would like to see what, you know, Superintendent Infante Green has done. I actually brought her a letter tonight from May 28th about all the things she's added to the school. So, I'd like to come up to speed on what that means exactly, and whether that, if she, she has said that things are better, and I want to figure out a way to assess that. I think we could meet together to look at policy in perhaps in other school student systems or in Massachusetts even, because Mass is always excelling when we're failing, and I'd like to see what they're doing and how they're doing it right. And I think we could use our time for that, as well as to visit schools and talk to students and teachers.
I believe that the Providence School Board could be most helpful in this period before our return to local control by building on the things that we're already doing well and working a little bit harder on the things that we're not quite good at just yet. I think some of my colleagues and fellow members up here mentioned just being able to elevate the complex and diverse needs of our many stakeholders. That's something we do well on our Providence School Board right now. We welcome anyone and everyone for public comment, and we also try to interact with folks as best we can. And I think we also have to continue building collaborative relationships with city council, with the mayor's office, with PPST. with PPSD, and with RIDE. I believe I bring some special experience to that. Before my time on the school board, I also served on the parent advisory council's leadership team. And I have served for over four years on the school building committee, which has helped open multiple brand-new or newly renovated schools. Thank you.
The third question, we'll start with Mr. Donahue and continue to loop. How may the Providence School Board be more accessible to the community, specifically underrepresented partners, including students and parent guardians, as well as educators who work directly with students?
That's a really good and tough question. I was at an event Saturday, purity input event. And that was something that a lot of the teachers were talking about too, is how do we get, how do we get to the parents, right? The kids are easy to get to, frankly. They have to come to school mostly. But the parents are the tough ones to get. I know we have culture coordinators in some of the schools. We need to go out more and try to touch hands with people as much as possible. Some of the teachers were talking about some great ideas about, and this idea's been floated before, right? But opening the schools after hours, making them more accessible to people for other needs beyond just their children's education. There's definitely outreach we can do. A lot is going to have to draw on, probably with principals, directly to teachers. It's going to be a plan. It's more than I'm going to give you in one minute sitting here. But thank you.
Good evening. This is Jamil Clark again. I think that the Providence School Board could possibly stand to do a better job in taking direction from the Providence Public School District administration, notwithstanding the superintendent, even other entities and input from city officials and state entities. I think that the school board could help foster a more productive and robust dialogue, not only within the school board itself, but also with other city agencies and educationally-minded programs and institutions to create a more diverse and possibly even complex, though it doesn't have to be complicated, structure for debate when it comes to important initiatives that the school board could and should be willing to take a vote on. Thank you.
So in my career in public service as both for an attorney general and for a mayor, I've learned that you have to meet people where they are. And it goes beyond just having public comment at the school board meetings. I would suggest having town hall meetings throughout the city that allow people to come, like tonight, have people come, have their questions, have their comments, have that interaction. But also, potentially, putting the school board on the road, kind of like what the courts do from time to time. Have a meeting at a different school in a different neighborhood. So that it makes it easier for folks around the city to come and be heard and just to see what's going on. But also, we should be in the schools. If I'm appointed to the school board, I would make it a point to get into the schools, to talk to the teachers, to talk to the students, and hopefully, talk to parents as well. Because that's the way you're going to do it. You have to talk to the people. You have to hear what's going on, because otherwise, what's the point? So, thank you very much.
So you, can you repeat the question?
Oh, sure. How may the Providence School Board be more accessible to the community, specifically underrepresented partners, including students and parent guardians, as well as educators who work directly with students?
All right, I just make sure I'm addressing the correct thing. Well, I, you know, I, yeah, I like the idea of these public forums. I think it would be good to have, like, on the calendar. I mean, I'm not going to say anything original here because what the other candidates have said is, I think that these public forums are very useful. And it would, we could have, they could go from, be, go from school to school. They could be at one place. I mean, that, I think would be useful to have it in different parts of the city. Because then you could, people would be allowed to, you know, address their grievances. And we could be made more aware of the needs of each particular school.
Yes?
I think what the school board is doing now is, in addition to our meetings being public, as is required, we also stream all of our meetings, and those are available to watch live or later. We've also, at times, relocated meetings to this very space when we know that there will be a lot of members of the public that are interested in the particular topics on our agenda. I think that flexibility is very important. I think we need to go to where the people are in the sense that as we shift to a hybrid model and each member is responsible for a particular region in the city, I think that there's opportunity for the members that represent each region to spend more time in that region, at those schools, at community events. I also think that a goal that we could consider is that now that the district has done so well increasing our services to our multilingual learners, I'd love to see the school board consider providing interpretation services at our meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Ditto what Melissa said. And also, I think that there's this notion that people go where they value, right? And I'd like to sort of flip that remix. It's, I think people show up where they are valued. And so I think that if the Providence School Board continues to vote for that they are valued in our space, which goes beyond us, right? That folks show up to public comment, and when their needs are not actually, when they feel that their needs are not being heard, that breaks down the trust, right? And I think that no matter where we have the meetings and folks are not actually feeling heard and valued, it doesn't matter where the meetings are. Like, folks aren't going to keep showing up in good faith. I do think there's room for us to get creative, however, though, and taken from artists and creatives. Like, we could co-host meetings with different, like, pop-ups. Like, we could have pop-ups at different schools, at different businesses, at youth programs, and churches. There is a way to meet people where they're at, but they have to be in creative ways that are in collaboration with the folks who are most impacted. And I think it really boils down to elect people and appoint people who, it's not a stretch to meet people where they're at, because we're there.
When I was teaching at Hope, the principal, Harry Potter, would have meetings at, live, after work when most, and so, parents came, students came. And I think that in other cases, we went to churches. Most neighborhoods now have neighborhood associations. And through that group, meetings could be held there, similar to what the city council members do. You know, I think that if you go to the neighborhoods and ask and give the impression that you care and you want them to be present, then you will have people who will volunteer.
That's actually been in the area of my concern and why I put forward the resolution to rotate board meetings across the districts in the city. But I'd also like to, you know, bolster board member attendance, not only at the regular school board meetings, but at the subcommittee level. And also, maybe recommend holding office hours regularly at city hall or at the school sites, also that, you know, the schools, the families, the students have more accessibility to the board members. I've made it my personal mission to not only attend commencement ceremonies, but sporting events and board meetings. And I would recommend that for the board members to continue that visibility throughout the communities that they serve and also at large.
There have been note cards floating around for people to use them to write questions. Let me just see whether we have a few questions to add to the mix. No, okay. Well, I think that includes part one. And I have to say, your enthusiasm and your willingness to serve bode well for the future of the Providence Public Schools. I think you deserve a tremendous name, and all of you.
Thank you so much. I want to acknowledge that Councilwoman Shelley Peterson has joined us. And what we're going to do is, Representative Magello, I see as well, thank you for being here. It's not an obligation, but we're going to invite the members on stage, the applicants on stage, to circulate a bit. And if folks have individual questions, they maybe are shy about a big public question, but want to talk to you, we encourage you to hang around and take those questions. We're going to reset the tables. I know I had said earlier that we were going to wait till 6:30, but it's 5:45. So, and we're waiting on two of those applicants. So as soon as those two arrive, we'll get started with round two. That way, we're not excluding anyone, but we also can keep moving forward. So, thank you all again. And we will make an announcement when we're ready to reconvene.